Okay, welcome everybody to the January fourteenth Board of Selectmen's meeting. We have one item on the agenda tonight at six thirty, Judith Duffy. There's a public hearing. The subject is discussion vote municipal conversion permit for the former fire station at forty School Street and land building at twenty-one Market Street, the former Keating Funeral Home.
Chris, will you do the...
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, will you open the...
Town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen Public Hearing Notice. In accordance with the provisions of section seven point one of the Foxborough zoning bylaw, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at six thirty P.M. in the Foxborough High School Media Center, one twenty South Street, Foxborough, Mass. The Board will discuss an application by Judith Duffy for a municipal conversion permit, which will allow the sale of the former fire station at forty School Street, as well as the land building at twenty-one Market Street, formerly Keating Funeral Home, which was auctioned by the town on December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. A copy of the application may be inspected at the town clerk and Board of Selectmen's offices during regular business hours. Any person interested in or wishing to be heard on this application should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay, all those in favor of opening the public hearing? Four nothing. I guess we're waiting for the applicant. Oh, there we are, I'm sorry. Would you like to come up to the table, introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one statement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a statement. The attorney's office for the, the financial attorney for this transaction is Coppola and Coppola from Modelhead. I just wanted to say it's absolutely no relation to me. I'm related husband's family, so I just wanted to make that clear in case there was a question about that.
Mark Duffy?
Judy Duffy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that you're blazing a path in town history. We have town council here as well. We're gonna have a lot of questions, as I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of questions. We really haven't gone through this yet. We have a lot of information. I think maybe it's, maybe it would be best to let you kind of explain maybe what you're thinking as far as development or, you know, future plans.
Well, I think the letter that we provided to the Selectmen kind of gives a general outline of what we were planning on doing, at least in the short term. Because we're still in the very infancy of this process, it hasn't even been thirty days. Future long-term plans, we really haven't gotten very far with those at all. Short-term wise, you know, we recognize the town's desire for redevelopment, whether that means redeveloping the properties as they exist or tearing the properties down. We're of course in favor of anything that improves the town because we have the building at thirty-four School Street that abuts these properties. So, in a sense, the reason why we bid on these properties was really to protect our little corner of the world, because our current building houses fourteen tenants, and also our, our business, the Judy's Flowers, is in the basement, and we have twenty-seven employees of our own. So, we really wanted to kind of protect our little corner of the world. You know, short-term plans...
Can you just speak up a little bit more?
Oh, sure. Short-term plans with the funeral home, it's, it's in a pretty bad state of disrepair. Right off the bat, we're gonna be boarding up all the windows to protect it from the elements. Every window in that, in the funeral home has been broken. So, we want to protect it for the winter time, just so it doesn't get any worse on the inside. But over the last five or six years, it's, the inside's deteriorated pretty rapidly because it's been exposed to the elements with all the broken windows and doors. The fire station, that, we are currently in talks with a local businessman that wants to purchase it from us. That would take place after the closing, which is scheduled to be either, well, it was gonna be tomorrow, it looks like it might be next week now. That's the immediate short-term plans.
Okay. And just, just for everybody's understanding in the audience and who may be watching at home, the purpose of this is to administer the conversion of a municipally-owned property in a manner that will be in harmony with the intent of the zoning bylaws and will ensure the integrity of budding neighborhoods. So, that's why we're going through this process right now. Pat, is there anything more that you want to add as far as the municipal conversions and what our, what our limitations may be?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board noted, this is a relatively novel...
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick Costello, Town Council. This hearing is required under the zoning bylaw in Article seven. The intent, as the Chairman stated, is to make sure that any proposed reuse of municipal property that's sold is integrated into the existing pattern of the neighborhood in the spirit and consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. So, this Board does have broad authority under this particular permitting provision. No sale, lease, or occupancy agreement with respect to municipal property can be consummated or completed unless the Board issues such a permit. So, it's a very significant step in the, in the sale process. In fact, both by the bylaw, in pursuant to the memorandum of sale, that's been executed by the purchasers with the town as a result of the auction. It's a requirement that the buyers have assumed to obtain this permit to move forward with the sale. The criteria for review is quite simply as stated. You folks have the authority to consider whether or not the proposed use of this property is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw and that it would fit in with the existing neighborhood or not be detrimental to the existing neighborhood within which the property is located. In order to make that type of decision, it's obviously necessary for the Board to have, you know, sufficient information in order to gauge the impacts or the effects that the proposed project would have. The bylaw does in fact state four specific types of documents that an applicant is required to submit. One is a detailed description and site plan for the proposed use. The second is the number of employees or residents which shall be retained or housed on the site. The third is projections of traffic flows and proposed access egress provisions, and the fourth is documents which would address other concerns that the Board of Selectmen may consider necessary and appropriate in order to make a determination. So, just based on the limited documentation I've seen and that perhaps the Board has seen, I think it will be somewhat difficult at this juncture in the, in the process for the Board to render any substantive decision on the impacts that this proposed use may have, because we don't really know specifically what the proposed use is. I certainly think that the bylaw contemplates a more comprehensive submission of material for the Board to review prior to being placed in the position of making a decision on the permit application. That being said, what the Board, the Board has basically three options when an application for such a permit is filed. You can, you can grant the permit without conditions, you can grant the permit with such conditions as the Board may deem appropriate to meet the criteria of the bylaw, or you can prohibit a particular proposed use. You can deny an application for a permit, which basically sends the whole process back to square one. There's no need for the Board to make any final determination tonight, let me just say that for the record. I mean, it's, it's your call, obviously. This is a duly posted hearing. We're here to hear whatever information or evidence may be submitted by the applicants as well as interested folks from the community. But it would be permissible, in my view, for the Board to continue this hearing, should it deem it appropriate to allow for additional information, whether it's that which you require or whether it's information that's specified in the bylaw, to be submitted to the Board to assist you in making a determination.
Super.
Any questions?
Okay. Thanks.
Let me kick this off?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'll get the questioning going. Actually, I wasn't at the auction, but that afternoon I heard that you were the successful bidder, and it took a second or two to sink in, and then I thought about it, and I said, "Well, given that you own the property next door, there's a great opportunity to combine parcels and to possibly build something spectacular up there." And you're probably aware that we had this process before where we had sealed bids and we asked developers to come by and sort of describe what their redevelopment picture would look like. And in my mind, and I don't know other people's minds, I had a picture, and that's why I was glad you got it, where you could move your business up to, you know, the common side and actually have, you know, retail on the first floor, maybe professional offices and, or maybe housing on the second or third stories. And I was a little disappointed when I, when I heard that you were just going to basically reuse the fire station for, you know, office building and other things. It really, really wasn't that, you know, I had this vision of a, oh, I don't know, a spark of, you know, something fantastic in downtown Foxborough that would, you know, sort of propel other developers to move in and build similarly spectacular projects. And did that ever cross your mind that that might be one of your plans?
Well, we definitely encourage development, and as I had said to Mr. Keegan, we're, you know, we're a hundred percent on board. If a developer has an offer that, you know, we can't refuse to buy the parcels and do, you know, knock down the buildings and put up something spectacular as you envisioned, we are all for it. So, we're not against development at all. I mean, we are florists by trade, you know, we are not...
Oh, no, I'm a good customer of yours.
Right, I mean, we're, we're not building developers. You know, I don't have any architectural background or anything like that, we're florists.
Part of the dilemma here is that in order for us to grant this municipal conversion, we were looking for the recipients of this conversion to have such plans. We didn't know that it was gonna go another few steps. And that's part of our dilemma, is that we were hoping you would be the folks who would take it and convert it and build it and make it spectacular. We didn't know that there was gonna be secondary and perhaps tertiary sales down the road, and that could take a number of years.
I'd just say a few words here for the Board members' collective knowledge, is that we had, I did meet with the, with the prospective buyers a few weeks ago, when the sale first was consummated, and then we talked about what the process, how it would unfold. And part of the concern, part of the challenge here, of course, is that, is that it's difficult to actually pull real plans together unless you truly contemplate a major plan of redevelopment for this project. It's hard to pull that together in a matter of just a few days, obviously, because you're looking at, you don't really own the property yet, but you hoped to own the property, and therefore, you, by having that ownership, you would then move forward on the, on the plans. Because this was an auction, there's no certainty that they would have actually owned it up until their bid was finalized. So, therefore, the lead time that would typically occur if this was a sealed bid scenario is different in that regard. So, I understand that it's a dilemma in our part, because we really would like to see the project redeveloped, and I think we were very open about that. I mean, we stated, I stated that to you, and we'd like to see it developed in a fashion that would really kick-start the redevelopment of the downtown area. We mentioned that at the, at the auction itself, that we, we hope that that, that would be the case. Now, when we, we talked about what your plans were, you did mention that you were willing to certainly look at some options for having someone purchase the whole thing, but we don't know what that means, and I think probably we need to hear more about that, because, you know, I'm not sure what a great offer means, you know, because, and I'm not sure what the numbers mean to you, but given the fact that this is, there's a lot of unanswered questions here, it puts us in, it puts the Board and myself to be in a position to support where we're at. So, we need to know more, is what we're at. What do you need to convey to you tonight?
Are you asking for a specific number, like what, a dollar?
Well, no. That's entirely private to you. But I don't want, I don't want, listen, I wouldn't want to be in a position where you forewent or passed up opportunities to really develop that into something nice with a long-term perspective of something that could develop your business as well over the longer term. I just don't, I don't have enough information to understand where we are at. And have you spoken to other developers? We've, we've talked to some people too, to see if they'll look at it, but...
No developer has approached me.
Okay.
The two developers I spoke to before the auction took place said that the project itself was not desirable for them to move forward, just because of the costs, you know, tearing down buildings, putting up, it's a major project, you know, not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but millions of dollars is what I was told. So, when, when Bill had approached us and said, "Were we enthusiastic about redevelopment?" we said, "Absolutely." But the, one of the, one of the issues is, is that we own currently, the key component is the large building at thirty-four School Street that we currently own, and for anybody to do any major redevelopment, we'd have to tear down our home now. So, when I had said to Mr. Keegan, you know, "We would be in favor of moving, but obviously we'd want to be motivated by an offer that makes sense for us." I mean, we do have ten thousand square feet in our current business in the basement of our building. We do have twenty-seven local employees that we employ, and we do have fourteen tenants. We have fourteen businesses in our building as it stands now. So, I mean, for, as the example I gave to Mr. Keegan was, you know, if a developer came in and said, "Listen, I know what you paid for thirty-four School Street, I know what you paid for twenty-one Market Street, I'm gonna offer you two hundred thousand more dollars than what you paid," well, that, in my mind, is not a motivating offer to actually move forward with that developer. If a developer came in and said, "Listen, we wanna take this whole place over, we're gonna buy out next door, the house next door, we're gonna go over to Mr. Altman's building next door, we're gonna take it all," and absolutely we'd be in favor of that, if it's, if it's beneficial both for our business and both for our fourteen tenants.
And when you said you bought it, it was a defensive bid. What were you trying to defend against?
Well, we, we wanted to make sure, our property in the rear, where our garage bays are, in the back of the building, we actually share half of the parking lot with the old funeral home. So, basically, our parking lot is split right down the middle. And our concern was if somebody came in and did do a major development plan, they could literally cut the back half of our parking lot straight off, making our building less valuable. The biggest criticism for our building is there's not enough parking. So, losing that parking was a big concern, not only for us, but for the mortgage holder on our, on our building, which is our bank. So, they've been very supportive of this purchase for us as well, because obviously they want to see the value of our building stay at the level it's at, as opposed to decreasing. So, it's not so much, we don't want to, you know, we're not looking to be land barons and to be absentee landlords and just to leave buildings vacant and, you know, sit as they are. We would love to redevelop the funeral home if it doesn't get knocked down and built into a sixty-foot building as it states in the paperwork in front of us all. You know, we'd love to redevelop the funeral home into a commercial business on the first floor, and there's already two apartments on the second floor. So, I mean, that's, that's within my comfort level as an amateur developer. Raising buildings and putting them up on our own without, you know, that, that's not in my comfort level. So, that's when Mr. Keegan had said, "Well, he knew some developers that may or may not be interested in the project." And I said, "Well, we are always willing to listen. Absolutely, we're there every day, seven days a week. So, if anybody wants to talk about redevelopment, we're all ears."
And I don't know if they are interested, but I'm certainly reaching out to folks to see if they would take an interest in it. So, we're actively doing that.
We're happy to listen.
I think for the, for our zoning bylaw, the twenty-one days is obviously not a long enough period to get the detail that our bylaw requires. What is our process of continuing this and giving them more time? Is that feasible? Is that possible?
It's, you have complete and full control of this process. I think that the Board could certainly extend the period of time. It's been suggested four weeks to me as a possibility, so they can come back with a more detailed plan that they would like to produce. I think that would be reasonable. And then, and then the closing, of course, would be contingent upon that as well.
How does that work with your, with your financing?
Valentine's Day, we always think as florists. The meeting's on the fourteenth of February. I mean, we're, we, you guys can continue it for as long as you'd like. I mean, we'll, if a developer approaches us and says they have a grand plan and provides us with that plan, you know, we'll certainly bring it back to you guys and present it. If my phone doesn't ring and nobody presents any plans, you know, I may be sitting here in four weeks and saying, you know, "We're in the same boat we were four weeks ago." You know, "We're a local business looking to expand our little corner of the world." You know, "We have a buyer that's ready to buy the fire station and use it for his offices." I don't know what his plans are beyond that, but he's a local guy, been in the community forty years, he's got a business here in town. So, you've got a couple of good local businesses that are looking to continue and grow their roots here in town. So, I would hope the Board would at least consider that as, as a positive, as opposed to bringing in an outside developer with, you know, who knows what plans.
What type of conditions, Sergeant, could we put on this if we were to, and I'm not saying we should approve this tonight, but what kind of conditions could we put on if they wanted to go ahead and sell the fire station where...
Indeed, the Board has broad discretion here. This is a, it's a unique bylaw, and the Board has broad discretion, as I've conferred with council prior to the meeting tonight, in determining what kind of conditions you want to place on. You could actually put time limits on it, you say that it has to be developed within a certain period of time. You could have, you could say that this is the kind of development that you want to see occur on this property. There's lots of different conditions that you could place on it.
Go ahead.
One of the, one of the considerations when this property was put on, on the auction block was it was, we took, I believe it was three parcels, the funeral home, small parcel behind the firehouse, and the firehouse. And those three parcels were auctioned off as one auction item. The reason being is we wanted to see, and it's in the master plan, wanted to see, that area developed in such a, in such a way that it would be large enough so that it would kind of kick off things. One of the things it would kick off would be the requirement for enhancing the sewer that would not only enhance that building, the development for that building, but also run down, to be connected down the street to help the neighborhoods that would be able to connect, connect in. A developer would have, would have understood that and would not have considered selling off the, the, one, one part of the, one part of the property, the firehouse. Because what you're doing is you're breaking up the, you're breaking up the property and decreasing the ability for a larger project that would kick in that sewer, that would kick in everything for downtown. And that was the intent of auctioning off that property. So, if we were gonna make one of the, a condition, my suggestion for a condition would be that that property would never be able to be broken up. It had to be developed. The property that you bought at auction, that auctioned unit would have to remain like that and not be sold. Could not, that would be a condition that, that I would like to see, because otherwise it defeats the whole process, the whole reason for putting that property on the auction block. Do you know what I mean?
It's my understanding that the fire station is already on town sewer.
Very limited what you can do. It's the town's, the sewer that's connected to services the second floor where the firemen lived. It's gravity fed. If you were going to develop that area and put like apartments or even businesses, it would call for more sewer, which would mean you would have to hook up the sewer line to, to Market Street and then go down. It would be a requirement. What you would be doing would be enhancing that area, and it would be a requirement, you would have to do it. If you put something up on the second floor, it's not going to help the development of that area, because it's not gonna do anything. It's gonna be the status quo, and we don't want, we don't want the status quo. That's why we put it up for auction. And also the things that you suggested, that putting, you know, knocking down the building and putting excess parking for your building, that's not even allowed in the Foxborough Center overlay district. That's one of the things that are not permitted. Another thing that's not permitted is storing vehicles in the firehouse. That's not permitted. So, you've got things that you can do, you have things that you can't do, and there are things that the town is going to impose.
So, the town storing their highway department vehicles was not permitted?
It's a municipal building. It was a municipal building. Remember, you're not going, this isn't a private property that's going to be sold to another private property.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
This is a municipal building.
Yep.
The town, we are the stewards of municipal buildings. We can impose what we want. We can, because we want to make sure what goes there is in the best interests of the town of Foxborough. That's the whole reason it was put up for auction. I mean, and there's specific things that were, that were written down, the zoning, I mean, I went on the website and I got all the information that was provided pre-auction. I got all that information, I looked up the references for, for the rules and regulations of the downtown area, what you can do and what you can't do. And what you've proposed in your plan is, the things you proposed you can't do, and then the things you're telling us today is not going to get to the goal that the town wanted, which would be economic development for the downtown area, you know, sewer and a nice building and stuff like that. Do you want to, do you know what I'm saying?
I hear your...
I mean, and if you had, you know...
I hear your message loud and clear. Yes.
I mean, believe me, when I heard that you had won the auction, I was thrilled to death. I thought, "Wow, this is great." And then the next day in the newspaper, when you were asked, "Do you have a plan?", you said, "No plan." And I was really, I was really astonished. And I was really astonished when I got this the other night at the Selectmen's meeting. This is the plan, it's only a page. It has, what you're required by the municipal conversion is a lot more planning, a lot more detailed plans, because otherwise we can't, we can't give up this municipal property on this. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna work for the town. It's not gonna, and it's not gonna work for you either. So, that's my comment.
I had a couple of concerns besides the letter, and I know it was really a quick timeframe, quick turnaround, from the time you, you made the commitment and got the winning bid to today, these things take time to develop, and I understand that. But it starts with a plan. You have a tremendous opportunity, I don't think you realize the opportunity that you have, but obviously you need, you need some help to see it through. That's number one. Number two, any restrictions that we put on this will be transferred to any, any future sale. So, if you were to sell a parcel, whatever restrictions are for development for the entire parcel will transfer to the new owner. So, they'll be required to still meet those, those conditions. So, for us, we have to be very careful, because we don't want to put conditions on a conceptual project that doesn't exist, a theoretical project, and actually hamper your ability to either sell or bring in a developer. You guys maintain the equity, you contribute to real estate as equity in a development and a joint venture. So, that's kind of where we're at. The other, the other part of it is this, this guaranteed performance on default. And I think, Pat, if you can come up and kind of, kind of explain that, because to me, that's, that's a big deal. So, I just want to make sure that, that you understand what's at risk.
Yeah, in the memorandum of sale that you executed back on about December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, after the auction, there are certain terms and conditions that govern the sale, many, most of which had been previously noted in the notice of sale. One of them is a guaranteed performance requirement, and I'll read it. Says, quote, "The buyer is buying, subject to a guaranteed performance of the amount bid, and entered into the memorandum of sale. Guaranteed performance is understood to mean that..." of sale. Guaranteed performance is understood to mean that in the event of default by the buyer necessitating a resale at public auction for any lesser amount, the buyer will pay the difference between his/her bid and that of the resale bid." So whatever amount you bid, if this is a default by you folks in, in this memorandum of sale, and the town is forced to resell the property later on, and they sell it for a lesser amount, the difference between the amount the town sells it for and that you had agreed to sell it for is a, is a guaranteed performance liability that you would have to deal with. I further note down in, in the last paragraph, page two of the memorandum of sale, it states that the buyer hereby agrees that he/she must obtain a municipal conversion permit from the Board of Selectmen prior to the closing date recited herein. So that is an obligation under the agreement that you have assumed as well to be here tonight to obtain this permit. So it's very significant that we, we try to find a way to work this thing out. I don't know if you have consulted with council at all, but you may want to just talk to an attorney just to make sure that you fully understand the terms and conditions of the agreement. I think the board is willing to work with you, as we've heard here today, but we, we need to make sure that we're all playing on the same playing field and understand the ramifications of what's going forward. This permit is a prerequisite to the finalization or consummation of the sale. So it's a necessary step that has to be accomplished prior to we, moving to the next step where you may want to consider selling the property to another developer.
One other question, Pat. How much assistance can the town give the Duffys in, in fostering a relationship with, with a developer or assistance with, with zoning or, or anything else? Is it just, you're on your own, come back to what was, with the plan? Or, because obviously, we don't want to see anybody get hurt. You know, they, they made a, they're trying to make a major investment in the community. We obviously have certain goals and, and ideas of what we want to see that developed as. What type of assistance can, can we give them, either through the town manager or the building department to try and, and line people up with a developer? Or, you know, what's our limitations? How far can we go? How far can we not go?
I, I think there's a very fine line there because we have an agreement here wherein the town on the one hand is the seller and these folks are the buyers. So they bought this property at public auction as the highest bidder. That being the case, they're entitled to a deed to the property, provided that they meet all the conditions of sale, which we were just discussing. I would be very reluctant to play too aggressive a role in terms of trying to locate or identify a developer to whom they can sell the property because that's in their control, quite frankly. They have, they have earned that right by, by winning the auction at the highest, as high as bidder. So I would be wary of trying to lead them in any particular direction toward transfer to another entity because that's their prerogative and their prerogative alone. And since we are selling the property, we gave away that right in, in large respect to determine who's going to develop it by agreeing in memorandum, memorandum of sale to accept the consideration that they are legally obligated to pay. That said, I don't see anything wrong with the town, whether through Bill's office or other town development agencies, working with the applicants to try to fine tune what proposals they, they may want to submit to this board or, or to line up an appropriate development for this particular site. So the town can't help in that regard, but I, I would, I would suggest that the town not engage in trying to find any successor entity because that's their prerogative under the auction outcome.
Okay. Thank you. So, what have any other questions?
I mean, I think, I think, I think it's obvious we're not going to solve this tonight.
No. And I think we, we came into this meeting knowing that there wasn't enough time to really resolve this. And I think is, you, you said that a month's time is enough to fine tune the plan or to come up with a, a very definitive plan?
I think a month's time to find a developer or partner, if there's any significant interest out there, I think that'd be probably a good timeframe.
It could take longer than that. I mean, that's just the nature of these, of these situations. They can be short term, they can be long term.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know, I know a couple of developers, but the ones I talked to said they weren't interested, but maybe with suggestions from, from Mr. Keegan's office or, you know, they might know a developer that's interested in the project.
And we certainly can't impose anyone on you, but certainly if we can, we can certainly let people know that the property is.
Right, right. That we're open to.
It's open to considerations.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So I don't know how long that process would take. Obviously, the, the closing hinges on that as well because we don't technically, we don't own it.
Right.
So we can't, I don't know how much detail I can get into a developer about developing something that we don't own.
Well, I think what we're really looking for is first a vision, and then secondarily, try to put some, some numbers and dimensions and occupancy to the vision.
I, I don't want to mislead the board by, by painting a rosy picture that I'm not comfortable with. I, I wouldn't want to come in front of the board and say, we'd like to build a big building under the requirements that you guys provided, that, you know, Mr. Caspar provided, without having somebody to back that, without having somebody with the knowledge to do that.
Oh, no. And honestly, I think Dave said it best. You clearly need some professional help to get this thing organized.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's good advice is to go out and seek it.
Yep.
So would it be unreasonable to, to ask them to come back in 30 days and provide the board an update and kind of, kind of see where we're at? And then we can kind of take an, another look at where we're going and where we're headed?
Thirty days from now is Valentine's Day.
They need, they need a couple days.
Afterwards.
Yeah.
Thirty plus.
After, after the town meeting, maybe?
But, but also, I think, can we agree that the parcel's going to be developed, it has to be developed as one unit? Because that's, like I said, that's the only way the sewer's going to kick in. Everything, everything that the master plan and the planning board and the town has anticipated is only going to kick in if that, the auctioned parcel is, is developed as one parcel. You can't, you can't break it up. It wasn't auctioned off that way because the town anticipated that that entire area would be developed.
Shows it on here as three separate parcels, though.
It was auctioned, but it was auctioned off as one parcel. What the idea is, if you, if you break this up, then there's no, the, the sewer won't kick in.
I fully understand.
So Ginny, I know it was, it was sold off as, as, as one auction, but from a zoning standpoint, because of separate parcels, you have setback requirements for each parcel. The only way you can put a restriction on where it has to be developed as one is if you did an 81X plan and combined the lots and made it one lot.
Yeah, but we can put in, we can, it's part of the, wait a minute, wait a minute. It's part of the municipal conversion. We can put conditions on it.
Bill, Caspar, can you come up to the microphone? I'll put you on the spot, considering you're our, you're our, our zoning guru.
Well, in, in 81X, you can do an 81X because there are buildings on the, the properties and you're changing the interior lot lines. And that's what's called a surveyor certificate. So that would create one lot. Right now, you do have three separate parcels. I know exactly what Ginny's referring to, though, is, and I'll try and read it. The, the downtown Foxborough Center overlay district was designed to maximize development. And the reason it was sold as one property was because the town realized you couldn't develop the fire station to its maximum potential if you didn't have the parking that the other parcel would provide. So by separating them, you're limiting the, the ability to really develop that fire station because it becomes a standalone with no property, you know? So I understand, but I understand about the 81X process, too, to make it for construction purposes, for development purposes, you know, that can be done. But if you do separate them, you lose all the potential there of the mixed uses that can be done in the overlay district.
My, my question is, as it's presently constituted, can we put a restriction that they have to be, that they cannot be broken up with a separate, with a separate parcels?
The municipal conversion permit is very much like a special permit. The board's, is the granting authority. And it's a special permit, and this is called, it's a pro, a permit of prohibition. So you can condition it any way you want. Just as the planning board conditions a special permit, just as the other board, zoning board conditions their decisions, you can do that as well. And yes, you can do that, in my opinion. You can put that condition on it.
Okay. Very good. We can put that condition on going forward if we so choose. Being that's a public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments or anything to say, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, Lorraine Brew, 126 Mechanic Street. I just have a question about the permit, the conversion process. And if whatever conditions are placed on that conversion permit, if those conditions are not met and there is a timeframe aspect to it, what happens to that situation at that point?
I'm going to turn to council on that. Would you like to? Thank you. As Mr. Caspar had noted, this is akin to a special permit. It's, these conditions that would be imposed would be zoning restrictions on the property. They would be enforceable through the building commissioner. Time, time conditions, having certain steps completed by certain dates definitive, can be structured in a number of different ways. And they can have different recourse or different ramifications if they're not met. The permit could be revoked, for example, in the event that a condition is not met in a timely fashion, in which case, without the permit, the sale could be revoked as well. And there would, in effect, be a reverter type provision. We'd have to fashion the language accordingly in the condition to make sure that it's clear to that point. But if a, a timeliness condition is not met, I would suggest that it, it should be imposed by the board and incorporated into the special permit in such a fashion that it would lead to a default under the special permit. And by specific language in the permit document, furthermore, a reversion or a reverter of interest back to the town, whereas the, the applicants or the permit holders' rights would be terminated altogether to own the property.
And that's where the guaranteed performance comes in?
No, the guaranteed performance is, is really a pre-final award, a pre-sale requirement. The guaranteed performance wouldn't kick in or wouldn't be triggered unless and until the, an applicant defaulted and then the town was forced to sell the property to a second bidder or a second party. So that would be a totally different type of remedy.
What would happen if we put restrictions on this property that they can't or won't meet? What happens then?
The, the building commissioner would have the right to enforce. If, if a permit was issued with conditions, as I said, they would become zoning conditions that would be subject to enforcement.
Well, like I'm saying, like, they, their original intent was to sell the fire station and redevelop back here. So what if we put the condition that you can't, that property is all one and it doesn't fit into what they want me to do? They don't own it yet. Can they walk away or?
Well, I would suggest to the board that a, a condition, much like a special permit or a comprehensive permit condition, contemplates that there is approval of, of the permit. You folks would, in all likelihood, not approve the permit if you can't approve the underlying concept that's being presented to you for approval. If the only proposal submitted to the board is, one, akin to what was presented thus far or elaborated, but involved a much smaller scale development or separate development of the parcels, I don't know that the board would be doing itself any favors or doing the town any favors by approving a permit as applied for and, and then conditioning it into a totally different project. So the condition follows the approval, in other words. So I think you first have to get your arms around and, and be comfortable with the building concept overall.
Prove the vision and then work on the details.
Bingo. That's exactly. That's it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Anybody in the audience have any more questions? Okay.
Dave, if we're going to continue this, one month's not going to work.
Right after the town meeting. First week of March.
Well, and also, too, because Jim's not here, we've got to have all of us here.
Well, Jim has to recuse himself.
Yeah, Jim can. It's going to be for the four of us, for, for all the way through. So I just wanted to suggest a few, because of my schedule as well.
We can continue it again if after four weeks it's not.
We could have it on a regular Tuesday night, too, and Jim just.
We can continue, the continuance.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have to have a special.
We could have it on a regular Tuesday night. Jim just recuses himself.
Okay. We could have it the week of the 15th. Valentine's Day.
Afterwards is okay. Yeah, after's okay.
Three weddings.
Debbie, do you know, do you know what our, our meeting's, well, we have the.
I am right here. We're meeting on the 23rd of February.
That's town meeting.
That's town meeting.
Okay. And we're meeting on the 9th.
I won't be here the week of the, the 15th on Tuesday, so.
Well, why don't we go first, week of March, after the town meeting?
That would be March 1st.
March 1st.
Tuesday, March 1st. That's not a regular meeting, but it would be a Tuesday night. The next meet, regular meeting would be March 8th.
Yeah, Tuesday, March 1st. I'm in California.
Let's do it on March 8th.
March 8th.
Regular meeting.
That's a regular meeting.
All right. We got to close the public hearing, though, right?
Yep.
All right, I make a motion.
You continue, you continue the public hearing. So the motion would be to continue this public hearing until March 8th.
Okay. So I make a motion, we continue the public hearing until March 8th.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four nothing in discussion. Okay, we'll continue till March 8th. All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We can close it.
Good luck.
We will close the selectmen's meeting.
Please let us know if we can help.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Continue it.
Adjourning the meeting, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.